Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm old man Sugarheart. Uh, I recognize that this wasn't on the schedule, but I thought I'd go ahead and show you my city in Town to City. Uh, we were playing By Sweet Carol, but uh, our game broke and the auto save saved it in a broken space. So we can't get to where we were without restarting. And so yeah, check out my lovely city. This is the game I've been playing off stream. Got this little train station here. People move into town. We stuff them in one of these little houses. And uh, yeah, I've been playing for a while. I've got it up to town. It's like a hamlet or a little village before then. Apparently need workers in the bistro and the clothing store. Uh, somebody's sleeping here. That clothing store is over served. But yeah, the general idea of this game is uh, people will move in. They'll have little demands like this guy. Or this family wants to live somewhere with a lot of light. Uh, I've got this place over here. Apparently there's some decent light in the neighborhood. So you can move right there. This person doesn't care where they live. They can live in the middle of nowhere then. Same with you. This person wants to live near a public service building. Think we've got a school somewhere nearby here? Oh, it's right next door. Yeah, you don't get better than that. But I really like this game. This one's pretty cute. There's not a whole lot to it. I'll, I'll give you the gist of like how it started. So like we started building these first three houses. And then we had like a couple of food stands here in this little warehouse. And then I immediately squared off this lake because I thought it would make a good park. I was right. The longest part, I didn't have any buildings in there. But I did throw a church in here because these people needed a public service. I feel like a church is a cool thing to put in a park. Alright. Anyone without like special needs, I'm gonna dump like the far corners of the galaxy. Most recent thing I built was the Ferris wheel. I got to put that right up on the cliff. Let's see, here's my first like market market. In this little plaza here, there's a little warehouse. It's my research building. Over here, we have people who like to live in the forests or next to cliffs. And then I started like sectioning off like places for people who want to live alone. This person seems very unhappy because he can't get food or entertainment or services, but I mean, decided to live out in the middle of nowhere. Like most of that I don't feel like is my fault. And in general, most of the people in the town are very happy. You move over here. If I move them into like one of the artisan houses, they become a little specialized workers. Alright. When I move more people in there, I need more people working in the nearby things. Yeah. And as you go, you research more things. We are over here. Third floor housing might actually be really good for us. I think I want to build more fun stuff. Build a merry-go-round. We could put this over here. The people who are unhappy that they've got no entertainment. That would be a good place for it. Over here is a designated place where like work isn't allowed. Got a lovely park. Over here, we have our hedge maze. So now I feel like we can't put a merry-go-round on that guy's property. He would complain. I gotta put it somewhere. Can destroy a house, I suppose. What does that do to the people who live there? Speaking of which, I need more houses. Start moving down the road here. I'll figure out some way to sneak a neighborhood back here. Think I can continue this road over here. Have some nice property up on the cliffside. This guy wants to live in a forest. I think I might already have a foresty building, right? Got a couple. This place looks kind of foresty. Here, we'll upgrade it. And we can stuff them in the top floor. Alright. Extra clotheslines. Wanderer can employ five additional workers. Sounds good. Right, before I get too distracted, we want a merry-go-round. But where should we put it? We could put it in the park. But man, the park's kind of hurting for space. Get rid of the first family we ever had. Just have a merry-go-round right next to the train station. That would be kind of cool. What happens if I destroy this? Yes? It made them sad. But merry-go-round? Oh, it's too big. I don't know what happens to the families when you demolish the home. I think they just die. But have you considered merry-go-rounds? There. Now everybody who's anywhere around here is super happy. Think there was also something I wanted to build, like a a blacksmith. Somewhere along here. Cause a lot of these people don't have uh, don't have goods and services. What do you do? You make shoes. We put blacksmith next to you. Be great. Got some new families. Cram them over here. This is our happy little hamlet. And the, the real people actually like wander around and do stuff. This lady's a priestess. It's happily married. Ninety-three percent happiness. What is this? Doesn't look scary at all. Uh, we broke My Sweet Carol. But like, not only did we break it, we broke our entire save file. And so uh, I think we're waiting for a patch. I can upgrade the mayor's home. You don't say. Uh, great. What does this button do? Great house. Like, oh, I can upgrade these buildings to artisan buildings. I think I need normal people too. Okay, this person needs to live next to a service building. So I can build another chapel or I can build another school. Got one over here. And I've got a school over here? Yeah. That's what I'm gonna do. It's going to upgrade this house. You want to live next to the school so bad? There you go. But what is this game? This game is Town to City. And it's a, a fun little city builder game. I like it a lot because like in other city builder games like City Skylines, you always like come across problems that make your city super annoying. Like you, you have some kind of like trash deal with issue, like your city becomes too big and there's nothing you can do. But here you can get away with most things, but it still gives you like objectives. For example, uh, you've got this little mail request thing. So like people will come in and say like, I need this. For example, uh, I had a couple who lived over here. They asked for a romantic picnic spot and so like I, I built this little spot over here. And there's like a little picnic table. I got the little sun shade and the trees. I planted a bunch of flowers around. Then there's the hedge maze I built. You always stall out on the challenges and requests trying to upgrade the mayor's house? I have not gotten to that point yet where you can upgrade the mayor's house. They did just add Halloween decorations to this game, so I made a spooky cemetery. Pretty cool. Coming to the spooky cemetery? No. Got carpentry stuff to do. Oof, what am I gonna do with you people? Think I need to start building something over here. Like this might be the spot to build like a new city center infrastructure kind of deal. We'll take like a warehouse. Slap it right here in the middle. Uh, I think I can build another research center. You don't need to be near anything, do you? Then over here, we build. We can build a school. We build a million businesses. Start with the basics. Clothes. Uh, restaurant. Now this would be a great place for a merry-go-round. So you know what? That's what I'll do. Too expensive. I will, I can build a newspaper stand. Or a potter. We'll build a potter. Spent a few hours with this the other day, excited for the full release of Town to City. Yeah. It is a great game. Forgot I was building all of this so I can move these people in. Can build a couple of residential houses nearby. Being invalid location. And we can move our lovely people over here. You need to be in a forest. Need to build a forest house. These people like to live alone, so I don't want to encroach on their territory too much. What if? Build a house over here. We surround that by trees. Big pine trees. You want a house with multiple floors? It's easy enough. Uh, this house. Get bigger. Can move here. And now we just gotta employ all these people. You need fun and services. I built a potter. No, I didn't have the money for a potter. I built a merry-go-round. Maybe I skipped that. Okay, if I was a potter. Somewhere around here, eventually when we get the money. Think here's a good spot. Cross from the school. If we need more service buildings, we could build it on the other side. Want to load this up. And so I will. Don't need that many artisans, but you know, whatever. Okay. Got the potter. You want to live near cliffs? Is there a place over here? These are cliffs. They count? These places are kind of near cliffs. Here's what I'm gonna do. Build you a special house. Right over here. You'll have a little sand path. Right from your door. For the rest of the world. Okay. We got you, cliff guy. Our forest. Yeah, upgrade this. A foresty. This person wants a place with crafted walls. Or with decorated walls. We can hook him up. First, get some lamps over here. One right by the door. Do some window plants. You know what? Have some sunflowers. Over on this side, you can have some withered ivy. Looks great. That enough? Seventeen? Close enough. Okay. What else do you need? You need entertainment. We were gonna build a merry-go-round over here. And we cannot afford it, but it'll get here. Uh, autumn decorations. But yeah, it's kind of hard to believe this game is early access. It feels like you can do so much with it. Build this little park over here for the kiddies. I've got a giant flower. This is kind of like the rich district. Over here's the city hall. Or you can set taxes. I really just ignore that. Got a lovely restaurant over here. And over here is a little plaza. Little puppet show. People can sit here and eat. Just another little farmer's market type place. Ooh, and here we've got the giant clock gate. What else do I have to show you guys? Originally I was gonna put houses up here, but they're like, we need food and stuff. And I was like, oh. Can't do that. My lovely misty park with little floaty flowers. Why is this a little kid? Alina. You have a friend? Guys gonna play together? Delighted. Couldn't figure out what they're doing. I'm a little curious. Do I have anybody to hedge me? Think I've ever seen anybody actually in there. Uh, how close are we to merry-go-round? Not very. You want a house with lighting? Then I suppose I should light up this area. What we'll do? Two lights on every house over here. Those came out a little weird. Okay. But hey, we got light. Ooh, and a flower guy. These were like my flower houses. I stuffed a bunch of flowers in between them because it was like such a weird position. Another little flower spot over here, but I think I need a new like floral sector. This is gonna be forest. Oh. Apparently the research not connected here. There we go. I was gonna be a floral section. We could also make that over here. Here's what we'll do. Thing in secret garden. There's tons of flowers. Actually, don't like. I always put like random flowers, but I think this time I want it to be all the same color. Think we'll make like a really cool path that just kind of comes through. Should we build a square on either side? And we grab the red drawer? And have a little path that loops through. Boop. Normally mushroom patch. Do like that. But right now, we're gonna stick with the red flower fields. I've pa- placed over a thousand decorations in my playthrough apparently. I'm crashing the game with my flowers. There we go. Uh, single flowers. We want to get like a few singular guys here that kind of like make it seem a little more uh, dispersed. Like we fill in these gaps. And it makes the whole field look a little less spray painted. You know what I mean? Like so we don't have like nothing but perfect squares of flowers around? Alright. Is there anything else I want to do back here? Think I might get rid of you. You landed in a weird spot. Maybe a statue? Think I've got a statue somewhere. Got a ladder apparently? I don't know why I have that.